Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for being here. It's 4:02 PM. I'll call the Lubbock City Council to order. Today is May 17, 2022, and we're in a specially called city council meeting today to canvass votes and swear in new council members and mayor. Before we begin, we will start, as is our tradition, with an invocation, followed by the pledges. Mayor-elect Payne has asked his friend Jim Cox to lead us in prayer. Following Mr. Cox's prayer, the Mayor Pro Tim will lead us in the pledges. Would you please rise?
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we are thankful for this day that marks a new beginning and a new day for our city, Lubbock, Texas. I thank you and praise you for what you have in store for our city and our newly-elected mayor, Trey Payne. Lord, we know that you have had a hand in this election and this entire process for a very long time. Today, we pray. We pray for our city, and we are thankful for Trey Payne being elected and his gifted tenacity and strong leadership. We pray for a continuance of integrity and strength of character. We know that he is capable and qualified to lead. We know that his calling is confirmed and anointed. Thank you, Lord, for the call to Trey for this office. Thank you for those who will work with him on his staff, and we thank you for our city council, our city manager, and our city government, and we praise you and thank you for all of those who have been elected. We know that nothing is on accident. We pray for these relationships to be fruitful and blessed. It is with confidence that we are believing for great blessings through your servants. We thank you for all of Trey's beautiful daughters and lovely wife Heidi, and we all know that we are especially blessed to have them and their family, their whole family, because we not only get them, but we get Trey. We are thankful for their sacrifice, and we pray for an anointing and protection upon them, and I'm thankful for my friend Trey and that he is led to serve. I pray that as friends and family, we can all come alongside and serve with our friend Trey in this great city and make a great impact. In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Please join us in the pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Mr. Cox, Mr. Massengill. The second item on our agenda tonight is citizen comments. I don't believe we had anybody sign up for citizen comments. I've not seen the confirmation from that from staff. So no signups, I see from the back, okay? We'll move to our regular agenda, which begins with item three. We have a resolution from the city secretary's office to consider a resolution to canvass the returns and declare the results of the City of Lubbock general election held May 7, 2022. Ms. Garza, can you please share the pertinent information with us?
Thank you, Mayor. I will. An election was held on May 7, 2022 for the purposes of electing a mayor and city council members for districts 1, 3, and 5. I will go ahead and read the results. Candidates for mayor: Trey Payne received 12,986 votes. Goulas Gus Khan received 604. Stephen Sanders, 1,692. Adam Hernandez, 3,572. Epifanio Major Garza, 343. There were a total of 19,197 votes in that race. Candidates for council District 1: Kristi Martinez received 962 votes. Patrick Kelly received 502 votes. For a total of 1,464 votes received in that race. Mark McBrayer was an unopposed candidate for District 3, City Council, and he received 2,034 votes. Candidates for City Council District 5: Jennifer Wilson received 2,529 votes. Bill Felton, 81 votes. Carrie Thomas, 831 votes. Randy Christian, 633 votes. Chase Had, 670 votes. For a total of 4,744 votes. Total votes cast in this election, 19,197. Persons receiving majority of the vote: Trey Payne for mayor, Kristi Martinez, City Council District 1; Mark McBrayer, City Council District 3; and Jennifer Wilson, City Council District 5. Mayor and council, I would ask that you would please approve this resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. Mr. Griffith, can I open the floor for a motion to begin consideration of item 3.1?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to accept the resolution canvassing of this election.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Mr. Choddis, do you have a second?
I second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Choddis. Counselors, our discussion on the motion to approve item 3.1. Seeing none. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that very same sign? That motion carries seven to zero. That concludes our regular business. My script tells me that I'm supposed to turn this over to Mayor Pro Tim Massengill, who's going to be the master of ceremonies for the rest of the day. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Today is about the newly-elected council members and their families. Today is a celebration. But before we get to that, I really would like to thank our four outgoing members who have served our city so well. Personally, I've had the pleasure of serving six years with Councilman Juan Choddis, Councilman Jeff Griffith, Mayor Pope, and four years with Councilman Randy Christian. I'm thankful to call each my friend, and Lubbock is a better place because of them. These gentlemen have served their communities proudly and justly. They sacrifice time and energy to push Lubbock forward. I'm sure in the past few months, they've been asked what they've been most proud of. I think they'll all have different answers. But a few that come to mind are the new police patrol division stations, decentralizing the police department, the building we sit in today, Citizens Tower, and all the new developments happening downtown. Our new dog parks, the $276 million in debt that we've paid down since 2016, and completing Plan Lubbock 2040. Gentlemen, job well done. Now, after today, I expect to see a few of you on the golf courses. Maybe Councilman Christian on the pickleball court. But before we get to that and release you to do all things fun, we have some things we'd like to share with you. And then at that point in time, after we show the gifts, we'll open the floor for final remarks. So what you're being presented with at this time is the portrait of yourselves that was hanging in Citizens Tower. Look on the other side there, one. We are presenting you with a plaque from the Lubbock Police Department, framed photos from your time served on the city council. You'll get your nameplates up here that identified you on the dais, and you get a City of Lubbock Tumblr. Now... I know there have been times that if you had a Tumblr like this, you might not have had what you wanted in it during some of these meetings. But after this meeting, you can put in it whatever you want, okay? So I hope each and every one of you will enjoy the gifts as a memento of your service here at the City of Lubbock. So at this time, I'm going to call on each of the outgoing council people and ask them to make any final comments about their service here on the city council. And I'll start with my friend to my right, Councilman Juan Choddis. Councilman?
Thank you, Steve. I'd like first to start off with saying how proud I am of seeing the chamber full of so many people. This is great. I love it. I wish it were this full at every city council meeting. So you need to come back for every council meeting. We'd love to have you here. I'd like to start off also by saying thank you to my constituents in District 1 for a vote of confidence twice in six years. Not one day can I honestly say I regretted running for city council and being a participant in making decisions that impacted not just District 1, but the entire city of Lubbock. It is great. Great to be from Lubbock. There were quite a few people that were very influential in my being here, which are my friends on the dais. Always shared with me information, friendship, camaraderie, sometimes even on the golf course, which didn't talk about it because of the scores, but it was great. I'd like to extend a... No, let me back up a little bit. For the public that's out there, it's time for a scolding because of the dismal turnout at the voting. Less than 10% of the people turned out to vote, Lubbock. We're better than that. 10% of the people are deciding what's going to happen in Lubbock to the other 90% of the people. To me, it's disappointing. You want to get involved in city politics? Easiest way to get involved in city politics is by voting. Now, if you really want to get involved in city politics, run for office if you can afford it. And we know where that conversation goes. But you need to get involved, not just get involved, you need to stay involved. I'd like to extend a thank you to a few of the staff members that helped me through these six years. Abby Dai, Matt Dotre. You guys were there at our beck and call, at least my beck and call. You were always there for me. Public safety, big item for Lubbock. Public safety, Chief Mitchell and LPD, thank you for the sacrifices you guys make. I really appreciate it, and the City of Lubbock does as well. Fire chief, Sean Fogerson, LFR, thank you, chief. Thank you, Lubbock Fire Response Team, for everything that you guys do. Jared Atkinson. We've been together for almost six years already. Great job, great leadership. Thanks for being a part of the success story of Lubbock. Chad Weaver's not here, but the legal department, thank you for everything you've done, the counseling, legal opinions, the documents you guys have shared with us to make sure we're doing everything properly. Then I've got to turn over here to Ms. Garza and Courtney as well. You guys are just phenomenal. Job well done. You were very helpful. Anytime I had a decision or a question, you guys were very instrumental. And I'll just mention a few departments, because I know I can't give credit to everybody, and it's not placing importance on one over another. But I've got to say, Community Development, Karen Murphy; Code Enforcement, Stuart Walker; Solid Waste, Brenda Haney; Public Health, Catherine Wells; Wood Franklin, Public Works; last but not least, Matt Rose with LPNL. These are some of the instrumental people in keeping Lubbock operational 24/7. Think about that. Somebody's got to keep those lights running. Somebody's got to keep that water potable. There's people out there doing that. We just take for granted when we turn on a switch and we turn on the water faucet. We don't stop to think about where and what it took to get there. And I'll close by saying the neighborhood where I grew up, known as Barrio Guadalupe, in the dirt, Calichia streets before they were paved, playing baseball on the streets of Guadalupe, to become a decision-maker, policymaker in the great city of Lubbock, very proud to say only in America and only in the city of Lubbock can little boy playing baseball on a Calichia street come up to be on the dais, decision-making process in the great city of Lubbock. Thank you for your confidence. Thank you for being here. Mayor Pro Tim, my friends up here on the dais, I'll miss you. It's not a goodbye. It's until we see each other again. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Choddis. Next up, my friend Jeff Griffith. Your turn for comments.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. It's been an honor to serve the city for eight years. The two councils that I've got to serve on, humbled by the work that's been done. Sometimes the arguments were long and difficult, and guess what? We got through it. Sometimes the results have been fantastic. It truly is an honor to serve the city. I've lived here 64 years. The most important thing that I've learned is how proud we should be as Lubbockites. We have a great city. The more I've learned with the help of great city management, great public works, great fire, police, Parks and Rec, code enforcement, LPNL, we have a great city. Everyone should be very proud to live in Lubbock. Most of all, today, what makes me exceptionally proud is this new council coming to serve. These new members that are here today for us, I want to thank you personally for deciding to give your life, your soul, your time to public service for our city. I really mean that. I have to mention the councilman-elect that's taking my slot in District 3, Mark McBrayer. Hopefully, you'll do a lot of different things than what I've done, but one thing I'm truly honored, I must say, my friend, I'm truly honored that you've elected to take the traditional hairstyle for the District 3 representative. Thank you to my family, my friends, my business colleagues. It truly has been an honor. Thank you to this council, Mayor Pope. You know, he's probably going to give me a hard time for saying this, but I reminded him that we'd probably spend more time together than me and maybe a couple of my ex-wives. But sincerely, thank you all for being here. I want to congratulate the new mayor, Payne, the new members of our city council to join these veteran members in making Lubbock even better. Thank you very much.
Councilman Griffith Wellsad, and Councilman Christian, the floor is yours at this time.
Thank you, sir. Mine are a little more prepared than Jeff's, but he's a little bit more of an on-the-fly guy than I am, so I thank you very much. Today marks the end of my career as a politician, but my life and service for our incredible city and its citizens in ways I have yet to know will continue. In the meantime, I have some thank yous to deliver. To the 11th floor gang, thank you for your patience, kindness, intelligence, professionalism, and hot tea. It's the foundation on which any success I might have had over the last four years was built. I will be forever grateful, and thank you so very much. I'm also grateful to Chad and his team of Legal Eagles. It was always fun to go downstairs and talk about what-ifs. And we had a lot of what-ifs this past couple of years. Becky and her folks are the best, and those in planning and zoning are saints. And my buds in PIO were kindred spirits. And what would I have done without Wood Franklin? He got a lot of my calls. And Mr. Keenum, Mike Keenum, I want to thank him for teaching me the meaning of hydrology. Everybody out of the know the meaning of hydrology. And all those that entered the Citizens Tower and other city facilities who worked tirelessly every day to ensure that our city works, you have my gratitude and thanks. I offer a special thanks to Catherine Wells and our Health Department pros for making our Source to Solutions Addiction Recovery Symposium truly the envy and the model for health departments across the state, as well as the nation. There is no other like it. This symposium will be one of the best ever because of them. Our entire community should be very proud of what they have done with this event. It's much needed in our community, and it's helped hundreds of individuals and families. And also, I want to point out my dear friends at the Parks and Recreation Department. I'm sure Brooke and Colby hated seeing me coming through the door with a new idea from a Callister Park. But together, the Maxi's have been planted and are finally growing and will continue to grow under y'all's leadership in the Parks and Rec Department. Jared, we're very lucky to have you. In spite of what the 11th floor crew has told me time and time again about you, we've had some conferences that you weren't aware of. But one of my favorite things to do with Jared was to make him laugh, because we certainly needed some laughs on occasion in the last few years. And only he will know this one, and I probably will continue to butt-dial you on occasions, so my apologies in advance. Mayor Pope, my friend, our leader, and my fellow council members, I'll call us for today the Magnificent Seven. In my books, every one of y'all are, in your unique way, and especially Sheila. You will always be near and dear to my heart. You're more than friends, you're family. And I know when, if I ever needed y'all, you would be there for me. It was a true honor to serve with you. Last but not least, my beautiful wife, Margaret. The last four years have been incredibly rewarding and monumentally challenging, challenging all at the same time. Your love and care 24 hours kept me going. Sometimes, when I wasn't sure I could. I love you very much. And to the new folks, the new council, may God bless each and every second of your time on the council. And if you're really lucky, Helga Gonzalez just might make you a cup of hot tea. Lucky me, I live in Lubbock. I hope you feel lucky too. I know I do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Christian. And now, Mayor Pope, we yield the floor to you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. It's a great day in Lubbock, Texas. Thank you all for being here today. I see a couple of former mayors in the back, one of which told me six years ago that mayor wasn't the best title you'd ever have, that former mayor was the best title. I'm about ready to join you guys momentarily. I want to start with first things first. I want to thank my family, Denise and Claire here today. Manning's maybe joined us via YouTube, but your love and support. I'm just so thankful for you guys. I'm thankful to my friends and supporters. I'm thankful to the people of Lubbock for giving me this chance. I'm thankful to this council. I'm reminded of the rock and roll song that Steelers wheels sang back in the 70s. You remember it, clowns to the left and me jokers to the right. Here I am, stuck in the middle with you. And that's sort of what I... Right, Sheila? They know how I feel about them. They are fantastic. They're selfless. They advocate for their districts. But at the end of the day, it's always Lubbock first. And it's been a remarkable opportunity to serve with these men and women. As I think about Mayor Payne and our new council, I implore and expect that our citizens will support them, provide them grace, and be patient with them as they have been with us. Remember, when you run for city council or mayor, you do it because you think you can make your neighborhood and your community a better place. I think two more things. One real big thank you. You know, as citizens, when we flip a light switch, turn on a faucet, flush a commode, we expect it to work. We expect our streetlights to be synced. We expect our dumpsters to be emptied a couple of times a week. We expect dangerous dogs to be picked up off the street. We expect our ball fields to be taken care of. Lord knows, we don't want our son playing second base getting a bad hop. We expect the airport to run so planes or trains, where planes can run on time. We expect our buses to run on time. We expect mosquitoes to be sprayed for in the summer, that our codes folks will respond to that neighbor who can't mow their grass or get their stuff together. We expect to be protected when we sleep in our homes at night. We expect somebody to be looking out for those winter storms in December and January, those tornadoes in April and May. We even expect somebody to come grade our alley after we have a lot of rain. None of that happens without the men and women that work for the City of Lubbock. 24/7, 365. Led by Mr. Atkinson, Ms. Garza, Mr. Weaver. But all the way through the rank and file, it's been my great honor to serve and stand shoulder to shoulder with each of you. Six and a half years ago, when I announced my intent to run for mayor, I talked about the American dream. And to me, the American dream is that every boy and girl has a chance to... And to me, the American dream is that every boy and girl has a chance to achieve his or her goal. They're all a little bit different. For one kid, it might be to become a teacher and to break a cycle of poverty. For another, it might be to become a nurse because they grew up in a household that was You know, a lot of what we do is about providing an environment where people can succeed, where they're safe, where they can learn, where they can work, and where they can prosper. I believe today, like I did in November of 15, that the American dream is alive and well in Lubbock, Texas. Serving you Lubbockites has been the greatest honor. My heart is full. Thank you, and may God continue to bless the great people of Lubbock, Texas. Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you to all of you on this dais tonight, especially those, the outgoing members. I will tell you, as a point of personal privilege, that I've served on many bodies, but this body that I've served with for the last six years has been the greatest. What we have done in the past six years is historical, and not every council can say that. So, to all of you again, and I think I speak for those of us that remain, thank you again for all you've done for our community. Okay. Next portion of this meeting will be the swearing-in. At this, Mr. Payne, Ms. Martinez, Garcia, Mr. McBrayer, and Dr. Wilson, we're all very excited for you to take the oath of office. So, right now, we're going to take a very short recess. Hopefully, it won't last more than 15 minutes. Our newly elected officials will need to go into the conference room here on my right of the dais to take the official statement and oath that's required by our City Secretary's Office. When that's complete, please come back to the chambers for the ceremonial oath of office with your families. With that, it's 4:35. The Lubbock City Council is in recess, and we'll be back in about 15 minutes.